Remember that we made a motion to put on a future agenda Jeff Calhoun to talk about minimum wage.
So there's some.
I found out a few things that I wanted to just chat with you all about. So as you may know, in 2019, state legislature was able to pass a bill that basically says municipalities can determine their own minimum wage if they choose to. Nobody has done anything with that because of the pandemic hit pretty quickly after that. But there are other communities, Fort Collins, over for sure, and a few others that are interested in raising the minimum wage in their community. Obviously, changing the minimum wage in one community will affect other communities. You know, I think we have seen that kind of effect already in certain contracts and things like that. So the Consortium of Cities has decided that they should talk about this, and Marsha was the issue sitting on the Consortium of Cities. About the time that Marsha came off the Consortium of Cities and Sean, on the Consortium of Cities, they started to create a working group, so they invited Longmont to join the working group. And I told them, I don't have the council direction to do this, so I'll sit in because if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So I thought I'd just listen in and see what was going on. They'd like to move through and do some community involvement and work with different businesses and things like that to determine if they should do minimum wages. If so, what would that minimum wage be? And then each community could decide for themselves if they wanted to do that or not. So I've been sitting in a few of those meetings and shows with Sean. That is not Jeff Calhoun, and that's not his group. So the Consortium of Cities is a separate group. They have been working this consortium. At the same time, Jeff Calhoun, who is in charge of.
Kahoon.
Kahoon.
Kahoon. No, with no else.
It's Kahoon.
It's the one, it's the same.
Just.
Jeff Kahoon. At the same time, who represents organized labor, has also been pushing for a minimum wage increase at the $25 level. They're kind of set up what they'd like to see. They are the ones who sponsored what they called the Boulder County Collaboration meeting last Monday. That sounds an awful lot like the consortium. They are not the same, so I believe that Jeff reached out to you and to you to be put on the agenda. I believe the mayor thought that was the Consortium of Cities asking to speak and to make the motion for Jeff Calhoun to speak. And so I just wanted to get all that straight because I'm happy to follow that motion to bring Jeff Calhoun to speak with you all. But I think you also should hear from the Consortium of Cities.
I do too.
Around whether.
Yes.
Or maybe change that motion to be just Consortium of Cities, but I think more of this is better.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
Well, they were, so I went to the meeting and we, of course, with the Consortium of Cities. And they, this was one of the ending conversations of the night. And it was, I said, I really didn't quite understand what was, what was going on because, and then they laid out, oh yeah, we plan to implement this in January. You have to put in ordinance. I said, so basically, I wrote back to them at a certain point here to, and I don't quite know, Taylor.
Taylor is the analyst in Boulder, who's the representative of the city of Boulder this month.
Okay, so now I said that I didn't think that a minimum wage ordinance is going to happen just, and there's a reason why I thought that, that I hadn't gotten a feel, a strong feeling from council. Although many of us attended the virtual meeting.
It was not led by the Consortium of Cities.
Right.
And so, so then I included the mayor on this so that we wouldn't have a rolling meetings situation. And then I, then I said, you know, I didn't believe that we would be putting it on the ballot because what Erin had kind of pointed out when we talked about the three identifying things that we would be putting on the ballot, you know, I didn't want to step on anybody's toes in regards to that. I said, if the minimum wage group would like to add something to the ballot, you know, I suggested that they work with the Chamber of Commerce. And so then in that part of my email to them, I included Scott Cook. I thought, well, let's, if they really want the ball rolling, they gotta get the ball rolling with the right votes.
But they're not asking for a ballot issue. They're asking for you all to do an ordinance that changes the minimum wage. Now, you could choose to ask residents instead. You could choose that to put it on the ballot issue instead. But what they're asking you to do, and you don't have to, and there's no dollars figured out, and I think there's a lot of dissent to this, but they're asking you to pass an ordinance that you all control completely.
Well, then I, I straightened them out. I said, I think this really is a, because of the fact that we could set this, and Boulder and Longmont said, we'd have people from Larrimer, well, and Jeff Cohen, Gruenfield coming in going, wow, this is great. We've reached into this. I mean, it would be worth their drive into the, into our communities. And the mayor, yesterday, when we were talking briefly, pointed out something I hadn't even thought of. We don't even have the housing right now to handle that, so if they chose to move here because of this, then we don't have that in place or completely worked out, probably better than some, but you know, still working on it because everybody is. So I said, it really seemed like a state legislature issue because they really should set it there, and we don't have that council.
So. Go ahead. So when we were discussing this Consortium of Cities, which was months ago, it was discussed. First of all, there is a state law that says that, and I haven't read it recently, sorry. It says that you can form an area that agrees, like the Boulder Consortium wants to do, that agrees to have a common minimum wage. But there's, part of that law says that you can only kind of inch up, so, so you know, it's not a big jump. And I think that was before Colorado Ways did its minimum wage last session, did it? No?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, you know, we were talking $11 or something, you know, so it was, at the time that we discussed it, the amount, the maximum amount of the increment was going to be way less than anybody in Longmont would work for already. So I was not worried about it. And that's why I actually didn't volunteer to be on the committee, is that well, this isn't really going to affect Longmont very much. But that was before the state raised the state minimum. So now I'm less sure. But has anybody calculated that, what, what the maps, because, you know, the effective minimum wage in Longmont is about 1550, would you say?
It seems like moving number, something like that.
But there's a lot of analysis, I think, that needs to be.
Yeah, right, so we need to do that, and a lot of, you know.
1965 is what they're, I think it's projected to move to in 2023.
The state. Yes, but what I'm asking is the different, you know, what is it that we generally, you asked the council, because we couldn't hire a pool.
We generally don't hire anybody at a fast food restaurant for under 15.
Yeah.
And I think it may be 16.
Right, exactly. And so that's what I was going to say. If it's, if it's 16 now, and it was the effective minimum in Longmont is 16, then the state permitted increment on top of 1325? So it still wouldn't hurt Longmont.
I, I think the question is though. Yeah, let me make a suggestion. So I would say, so I think Councilmember McCoy with his email kind of said Longmont's opting out of the conversation. And so I don't think that's really where you want to necessarily have.
I didn't think so. I had no guidance.
Yeah, I think, I think, let me help get more information rather than that, is my thought, is if you want to at your next meeting, if you want to continue the Jeff Calhoun motion to have them, to have him come, maybe just add at the next meeting to also invite somebody from the Consortium of Cities to explain that process. If you then give me permission to stay on the working team, I can continue to bring you guys in the loop and then give you that data and then I think.
And they kind of wanted.
Have this conversation public, because you should really have this discussion in public, yes.
And they kind of wanted to have the working meeting between 9:11 and sometime during the.
It doesn't work for you.
But I could, I could.
You can go and it's fine. I just didn't want to lead them on either.
Yeah, right. And that's true. If this council is saying today, we don't want to be part of that, then that's, that's, you know.
I don't think we can make that decision until we hear from them.
I feel like a little.
And we've asked Jeff twice. I think it would be an insult.
Yeah.
If we said, ah, we're going to have somebody from the consortium. Because he does represent the unions, and we should hear that as well.
I would listen to both.
Yes.
So if you want to, I will get working on that, but my thought is if I can bring the two of them together at the same time so that you can hear from both aspects of that, I'll stay on the working team. You don't have to be on the working team.
I haven't heard from Scott Cook as of today. I'm sure he's now bringing up it's an issue with his board to have that conversation.
We should.
But if that hadn't happened, and I just didn't want to, to do this without them, you know, they are a intricate part of this.
And there's a lot of stakeholders that I think we would need to involve, what we probably want to hear from before you make that decision.
Definitely. Yeah. I'm going to ask maybe 10 who might remember it better because you were on the panel. It was before the pandemic, but the university women gave a really strong, I thought, explanation for the impact of having a minimum wage. And I thought that it was very well done, and I subsequently read, you know, other data that I think supports their conclusions pretty strongly. But I also believe that the consensus opinion among the members of the chamber will not agree with the university.
I agree. Well, but I would say that when you all change the living wage, so for city contracts, you contract with a business, they must pay a living wage as, as you guys have stated in our ordinance, right? When we surveyed, there was only one company that thought that might be a hardship. Out of all 500 vendors or so, most people were like, oh, I'm already paying more than that. Right. And so I, I feel like there needs to be some involvement. We could, we could kind of play it low and just follow along with what the Consortium of Cities is doing and then bring that data back to you to make that decision.
Right, and that's, you know, the back of the envelope calculation, back six months ago when the consortium talked about it, was that, that the most, the minimum wa, the, the biggest minimum wage increase that the area could do was going to be less than Longmont's living wage. So that's, that stuff is.
Just so you all know, council members, that, you know, I said, I didn't think anyone in the council who, that, that anyone in council would be against the minimum wage, especially if all stakeholders were supportive of it, certainly not me, but minimum wage group doesn't seem to have, doesn't seem to include all the stakeholders yet. And so it's really pretty cool that they do that. And it seemed like they got the, had one, one horse walking, the other one not in this situation, and it seems a little disheartening.
Yeah, so that message, when they come to us and describe what they are working on and how it works, then that message from council in public needs to go out.
I absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I, okay. So you know what we didn't do is go around and take it to him really fast. So, no, that was okay because I led you right into it. So this, this pre-session was going to be on a talk about homelessness as well as the updates. And that was requested by Shaquita and Mayor Tim because of what they were listening to in ELC. Am I correct for that?
Sure.
Okay. So we had to, Commissioner Yarborough, right?
Yeah.
But don't forget that.
Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember Martin.
Councilmember Clay.
Councilmember Tim Waters.
Oh, you're a maybe city manager.
See, you see their assistant city manager, and I will let you have the rest of me.
Oh, that's okay.
Thanks.
Dunkin' Donuts City Whip.
Uh, Councilor, Susan Udalko Ferring is going to be late. She has a meeting. She said she might roll in at 6:30. She might not. So we'll just wait and see. So let's go around and do an update, and if, if you need help or a direction or whatever, or a question about the boards or permissions that you're on, let's ask and see if anybody has an answer or advice. But let's just start.
It sounded like you're already on mine, so I'll just finish up the last parts of it. We talked about homelessness at the Consortium of Cities. They had rescheduled their meeting to be on the same night as the R-CAP, so Suzie went to that.
Oh, okay.
And so I haven't checked in with Charlie Kemp to see what really happened, and I haven't gotten a chance to talk to Suzie.
Okay.
And then our public places was.
I'm very impressed.
Yeah, and so if people are interested in doing that, if you want to take a picture of those sites and put it out on your social media, put it out there, I'm sure there'd be plenty that might be interested in this. Start this tomorrow.
Um, yeah, I've got a bunch sort of, so I don't want to forget. This is just something to be, to, to know about. I was at the water board meeting yesterday, and Ken Yusnovov seems to have this completely under control. But the Windy Gap, the Chiny Hollow project is going to ask for more money in jam. And so that's, you know, something that we need to be aware of. You know, I've completely flip-flopped on the importance of building reservoirs because, you know, our weather is so weird. But, you know, that's, that's just something that's on the horizon. As I said, Ken does not seem to be too upset with it, although a number of other municipalities at the meeting were pretty. No, not Ken. There is a ruh-ha at the airport, and Harold, you got a letter from, from the board. But I think that that letter from the board kind of understated the problem, and I think you may already be aware of this, but I'm not exactly sure. The hangar owners got huge tax assessment increases. And I'm not talking about the, you know, the 25 to 50% that the rest of us got on our homes. I'm talking about 10x increases. And that appears to be, and correct me if I'm wrong, Harold, if you know and I don't, but what, the person on the board who was most knowledgeable had a rule whose name I've forgotten. Shame on me. That had apparently not been applied, and it, they are now treating all hangar owners as if they are commercial property. And so they have this huge increase in, in the rule applied to get their assessment. Now, despite the fact that I like the airport, I don't necessarily like all the pilots, so I'm not broken up about this. However, I do like the airport, and I think it is important to Longmont's economy, or at least should be important to Longmont's economy if it isn't. And so we, as a council and as a city, need to, I think, spend some time talking about how we're going to react to this because those hangar owners are not commercial operations. And they're, I mean, we probably can't get this changed, right? Because it's not just us. It's all the airports in Colorado. The same thing is happening. But, um, but the economic health of the enterprise could be affected if all the hangar owners go broke or something. I'd be pretty broke if my property taxes went from $2,500 to $25,000, which is what they're facing.
So, Marsha, I did go to the town hall with Sonia and Kyle and Karen McCormick. It's, it's, is it a bill, Sean? It's just HH is what they were calling it.
Yeah, joking along.
Yeah.
Preparation H, but.
That, they need to watch that bill and vote on it in November. It is addressing.
That's a ballot motion.
Yes.
And what's it going to do?
Well, you have to read it. To me, it would be a long talk here to, I say, read that bill and take it back to them. They need to vote and read it very carefully because it will, it does address property taxes.
And, oh, it's, okay, so this is the thing. They're talking about lowering, like, on, anybody who is not 65 or older is going to be like $50,000 off. This is rough, rough conversation about.
Oh, so this is not specific to airport.
No, it's not. It's just about taking my.
It's commercial.
Commercial stuff. No. Now, there's something else that, about the, the airport that is kind of coming up. It should be on the horizon. First off, there's tons of, apparently, egg money for putting in businesses that are associated with that. And maybe Shaquita, you may remember seeing this, when Tom Belsett was at, at NLC, was talking about putting these pads, they're kind of launch pads for those commercial style. Yeah, was it Offscreen that have the, like, the Marines use, that have the blades go up, take them up to, let's see, 5,000 feet and then direct them forward, and then they take off the president. When he did his survey of the Marshall Fire, when he flew over, was in something like that, military style. And so, but then there's one other thing. Jeff Cook there now ha, and this is just the tip of the iceberg I'm a little concerned about. And it's the lead and the fuel that are being dumped as people fly over the communities and, and on that airport and into the ground, especially on the airport grounds, the, the concentration of, of lead.
Yeah, that's a big, that's a big issue, and it's being, it's being looked at.
Okay, well, we're going to wait it.
We're getting, we're getting.
Yeah, sorry, you didn't.
We're pretty far afield.
But it's.
I do want to know, are people dumping their field?
No, it's just the thing, it's just that they just aren't very efficient, their engines might not be efficient enough, maybe they're, they're.
So, so that's, that's an old thing, and Lisa Notland knows, knows the initial, we could, again, it's, it's, yeah, but it's, that's a red, a real red.
Okay.
Okay. So, so, but the economics of the enterprise, which is Vansford Airport, I think, need to be examined closely because we don't know what those, what's going to happen to those pilots. And, uh, you know, yeah, I can find out what HH, whatever it is, does for them, but, but for them to go from being taxed like personal property at 7% to be taxed like commercial property at 30% is.
Are some of those hangers commercial operators?
A few of them are, but the ones that are complaining aren't.
Most of them, a lot of them are because a lot of them were built by somebody. This may be what they realize. So there are hangers that person X has built, and then they lease those hangers out to other pilots, which actually makes it a commercial operation.
Right, but these are the people who got an assessment, like, that are, that are talking. Okay, so this is not the people who are at the second level of leasing.
And that's why they got it is because, uh, it's like, it's like an apartment. If you have an apartment or anything and you're renting it out, it's taxed as a portion.
Sure.
And so renting out airport hangers, unless it's condo, is, and so I think there's only two condo associations on, you know, on that, so.
There are also people who own their own.
Yeah, and what they also, I think it's a little bit different in the email. They use the cost method of appraisal.
Which email are they? Oh, not, not that one, that one, yeah, but it did not have the keyword.
Which is terribly important to use appraisal.
Pardon me?
Using the cost method of appraisal is a terrible method of appraisal.
The whole thing is really screwed up right now. But, but Harold, they didn't use the keyword that is causing, that, that was discussed there. I, I can't imagine why they didn't, but they didn't. So I'm, I'm happy to run it down and find out what's, what's about it. But I am much less worried about the pilots, or even the pilots with condos, than the fact that what we could be seeing in, is a disruption in the viability of the enterprise.
So I, two issues on this. So one, they were using cost method of appraisal, Marshall and Swift value.
Yes, that's it.
That's what they were using. The assessor is actually using the market sales value to assess it, which means that as they are selling their hangers, that's actually what they're using to assess the value now, which technically is, is not any different than any other commercial business here. The, the challenge with it, where Jim and I are trying to get together, is, you know, they, they put it in the letter asking questions, and so we can, we can ask the appraiser, appraiser, and so why they did this, but, you know, part of this where we have to be careful, I thought they wanted to be, they didn't seem to ask for a meeting, but, you know, we can ask the.
They don't know why this happened.
Yeah, and, and part of that where, you know, we can send these questions to the assessor, but that really has to be during the challenge moment of when they're going through the process that, that is built into the system.
Right, but I'm, again, I'm not worried about answering their questions. I'm worried about what happens if that, if X hangers get a default because they're, they're, if, they're paying the taxes partly to the, to Longmont, right? None?
Well, no, they, the property tax gets paid to the county. Only the county distributes it, so it goes to the county, the school, and the city. So we all get a portion of, of the property tax that are paid, but.
But what if the people that are paying the rent stop?
I think that has to be determined.
I understand I'm raising the issue because I don't think we're thinking about it, right?
Kids, perhaps the state, the county treasurer could answer your question.
Well, if they stop, if they stop paying our rent, that's a different question, which goes into our.
Right, I'm not worried about.
Which goes into our lease terms, and then there's different cure models, the comment, the lease terms, and that becomes a much more complicated.
That's the issue that I'm raising, because if this doesn't get remedied for those people that have had a 10x increase, then they're going to do something that is going to affect our income as, as the airport enterprise. That's my fear, so I, I, I need to have that looked into. They can fight their assessments for themselves. That is not really our problem. But I do think it puts the viability of the enterprise at risk if a lot of those guys change their, would have to change their business model or are forced out of business.
You said, was the airport the only one that you, the airport board the only one?
Um, I talked about one before that, oh, the Windy Gap Water. No, I went to the, I went to the, my first L-NET meeting, and that was very nice, but it's not a big thing. There was nothing, no news.
Uh, I think the other council members, I think you all probably got the email about Callahan House.
Yes.
And so, being on historic preservation, I will say that it does sound like there might have been a disconnect in reports given to my staff. As far as the importance and what the options are concerning the concrete curving, I, I know, I don't know what Callahan, because we're not Callahan's, we, it's on, but historic preservation got the report that there was not the ability to recreate the curving in a historic fashion. And so that's kind of what they heard, and so therefore had limited options about what they could or cannot acquire or think about it. And like I said, I don't know what happened on Callahan, I, Callahan's side of the equation that we saw in the email that was presented to us.
Yeah, there's been apparently some disconnect. So did you escalate that to staff?
I, I sent it to.
Yeah, they, they sent something to me.
Okay, they sent it to Angstaff.
So there's two different issues going on. So in terms of where the curving hits the driveway, they can still make that consistent with historical driveway. The challenge is they were trying to deal with is in order to get the drain pan in the curb, and building the curving that way is a little bit different. Now, in historic preservation, the designation actually doesn't go to the curb. And the, the curving on Third Street, because they sent me some images, is actually the same style of curving that was put in now. The same style of curving that was put in now, they had removed many, many years ago, that curving on the other side. Uh, on Third Street, uh, let's see if I can find.
So Callahan is only half compliant as it stands, one street but not the other.
Well, there's no compliance, because that's not, cut, the, the street section is not under historic designation.
I understand that they, they feel that it's, that one side is the way it ought to be and the other side is.
Well, I think, I think the big thing is, uh, is not to lose the rent money. I think that's really what's driving it, not really, uh, anything else.
So staff is handling that.
Yeah, we're, we're digging it, we're digging into it now, in terms of this, I did get word that in terms of the driveway and the stor- the historical component of the driveway. I don't think they went all the way to where that driveway comes out, so they can still do that.
So you mean they, when they went, you mean they haven't worried about that?
Oh, they put curb in, but it doesn't, there's a point where it joins the driveway. That can still be, allow the driveway to be put out, that's what, what I understand, trying to find.
Are there two letters, 'cause the one that, the one that I got said that nothing had happened yet.
Karen, Karen, I think we all got something from Karen.
The one today?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see that anything happened yet.
It's in.
So it happened between, it happened between the time she sent the letter and the time that anybody read our escalations.
This is the days long for historic preservation.
Doesn't have one, Callahan doesn't have.
But it was, no.
Who was the staff, the Callahan staff?
For historic pres.
Oh, historic pres is, uh.
Staff, please, I'm sorry.
And I know that, um, Glenn's been sitting in all those meetings, so.
Uh, the driveway work has not impacted a portion of the driveway or driveway apron within the driveway, so. That's a piece on the grant.
While he's finding this, is there any chance we can look and see how many boards and commissions meet? During the driveway day, I assume things like the, uh, senior senator, uh, sen- senior board would meet during the day. Uh, and other things like that, but, uh, is there a, uh, advantage or disadvantage of having Callahan meet during the day? We might get.
They are meeting, they do meet during.
They do meet during, during the day, but is there advantage of having them meet in the evening? If we're trying to find people to, uh, serve on these boards, you know, across, could we find more people to?
Problem with that is that they have events, they have, a lot of times, so, and they, they need to be able to plan during the day.
If you can look at this, this is the, the existing curving that was on the side before it was redone. So typical curb.
So Mayor, could, could they meet at some of the stations? Or matter, or they matter, other location that, that their house is on?
This is what has been put in, so the curb itself is actually the same, but they changed is the drain pan profile for the. For the stormwater on the river, but that's all in the street, and so the actual. Physical structure of the curb hasn't changed in terms of this, but you can see that they put this out from stormwater. To move water from that perspective, and it's still, the new curb is tying in. To the, to the driveway, and then when the driveway is redone, that'll tie in as it did before, so.
So it shouldn't cost them the grants?
I don't think so, um, again, I still have staff working on it, the difference is, to give you a sense of what the difference is. So apparently, on Terry Street, this was all done a long time ago. They have more of the flat top curb, which I think we're talking about, but that wasn't on the third street, so.
I think so.
That's what we know, that would be different on the two sides.
Okay, so the only other thing I wanted to report is that, while, uh, planning and zoning is tomorrow night, so. Anything I'm talking about is a month ago, uh, in that time, the city attorney's office contacted me, as we know, as council members. We get a lot of communication about both Bon Farm and Champion Greens, and they've been very aggressive also with planning and zoning. To the point where they have rolling presentations during public invited to be heard, and, uh. The city attorney's office is worried that that is now getting to the point where it's not so much First Amendment rights issues, but actually. Violation of ex parte communication, um, and so. I'm sure, I imagine I have not gotten you an update lately, but that the city attorney's office is looking at. Ways to possibly amend the bylaws to prevent the ex parte communication violation from occurring. Without violation of First Amendment rights for public invited to be heard, and something that, uh, also is being considered. To bring to us as city council members for our meetings as well, uh, should this kind of thing occur for us at our public invited to be heard. Um, so that was one thing I would also bring up, 'cause that can very directly impact us in our bylaws as well.
So it's coming. So, uh, in other words, I, I, I was not aware that the ex parte communications problem that we have. Also applies to the planning and zoning commission, but it does.
It's almost more aggressive in the planning and zoning commission, maybe it's in front of us. Well, and they have, they have longer public invited to be heard, so theirs is five minutes versus our three minutes. Um, so it's, they're, they can, and they've been queuing up presentations on the computer and.
Isn't it up to the chair to decide?
Well, that's part of it, is, uh, they've been doing reeducation with the chair, kind of, uh, to. Solidify what he can and can't do. Uh, in those kinds of circumstances, but it's, it's, you know, it's bothered enough commissioners to the point where they made. Um, a complaint to the city attorney's office.
Yeah, this actually came.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that.
Yeah, that's, uh, high schools, so. Bon Farm and Champion Greens are both in my ward, and include residents that I have or have corporate relationships with. And I have informed them all that. Because of what's going on in their neighborhoods, I cannot discuss those with them, because I thought the essence of ex parte communications was that. One council member or board member can be influenced or have special information that the rest of the board doesn't have. So, uh, I don't understand.
So, I, I can explain in the, in the sense that the city attorney's office is concerned because they, they continue to come to every public invited to be heard. Whereas the developer does not get the same opportunity. To rebut anything that's said during those comments and those presentations, so.
Interesting information, it's nice, but. Okay, I'll be pleased, um, so, we, uh, so mine also will be a month. Behind for LDVA, um. Not, I mean, there's always a lot going on, but, um, so we have a parking leasing agreement with Elk Lodge. So that's more parking, um, right now, we're still trying to determine who's going to, where those parking spaces will be. And, and all of that, um, we will be having, uh. Longmont Creates, uh, we have Longmont Creates, that's another, uh, grant opportunity. Um, for LDVA, and, um, I think you all know that Kimberly just got this amazing award. Yeah, so, um, so my meeting is next week with LDVA, but, um, just mainly what we did last, last month was just. Go over grants and everything that people were applying for. Um, transportation, let's see, where am I at, transportation, I'm gonna go to my notes.
Will you say that?
Okay, where are my notes, um, while I'm looking for my notes. It was a great meeting, I did get an email today saying that, um, they cannot hear us. So, um, I told them that I would talk to staff and see what we need to do about, they said they could see us, but they can't hear us. Clearly during transportation meetings, and they can hear those at the airport meetings, but they can't hear us. Um, so they're talking about the, you know, vision, um. Vision Zero, where, uh, we were, we had in public invited to be heard, and we were just talking about creating a task force. And that task force will consist of thirty to forty people, um, and they're putting out a RFP, RFP for consulting services. For the action plan, um, and creating a budget for twenty twenty four. Um, and then just the striping was done over there about Central Elementary. Um, stop signs, uh, were shifted that they, um, that they found. Over in that area, because that's where we got a lot of public invited to be heard about that area. Um, interestingly enough, there's been five accidents at that crosswalk of Fourth and Ross around that area. In the last five years. Um. I think that pretty much everything else were just some statistics, and we did have, um. We talked about the Northwest Rail update, Patrick Stanley, uh, the Peak Service. I, I don't know what my notes mean, I'm just reading them, um. Um, just, we're talking about thirty-five miles extension, BNS F tracks, um. Uh, talking about three, you know all of this about the, um, the tracks, so, three week workdays, trips, morning and evening.
Yeah.
Right, um, and they're talking about having a hundred and nineteen E-bikes, will be there. Of, uh, yeah.
Will be where?
I think at the station.
Really?
Yeah, that's the thing we're talking about, how would they get there, can we pedestrian?
No, scooters.
No.
Did you hear, you heard what they were talking about, that was like the thing of Denver's existence?
Yes, now, we, we haven't talked anything about scooters, they haven't, so.
Well, they did, we passed a no scooter ordinance last year.
Here too.
And then, oh, the fair study is out too, so I do advise, if you all wanna know about the fair study. Uh, we will be having buses going to Walmart on one nineteen, eventually, um. And zero fare for youth ages nineteen and under, so the RTV fair study was, um, at the transportation meeting. Still talking about the fairs and, um, across, across, uh, the region, so.
Good info. Suzie.
Hello, I have to read.
Do you want to go first, or?
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be quick, so we're fast.
There you go.
Gophers keep walking their legs off, oh, maybe more. And, uh, the crowd is trying to figure out what their priorities, understanding that. Whatever the package of recreation amenities or facilities, uh, there's gonna be a line drawn somewhere and, you know, they're trying to sort through. What they would like to see us do, um, I will add that, you probably have had some correspondence. Uh, that grew out of the, the community meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh, the senior senator that was focused on recreation.
Yeah.
Number of people came out of that with a point of view, not certain what was said, I wasn't there, um, that it's Dry Creek Park, what, what we identified as Dry Creek Park. And framed as open space, without understanding of how it was purchased, master plan that it's part of.
I get so confused.
And, um, so there was some interesting, there was some misunderstanding about that even on the craft, so hopefully they're, work that through here.
If I'm gonna add, there's, uh, apparently there was the same in information disconnect problem. About the YMCA, uh, Centennial Land Swap Opportunity. Uh, and it's kind of the same thing, people in a state of high dudgums because you're not giving away your public land. Or because we might do things with it that they don't approve of.
When I, I went through with a resident, a series of emails, she was just trying to explain, I was like, I, I don't think you really. Are interested in, in the information, you go right to the conclusion, I'm not gonna change your mind, I, I'm not assuming why we're gonna continue doing this.
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't mean to be offensive, but I, it's like there was no, I, I always spent hours trying to explain. It's like no point, because it's supposed to be one of the explaining.
Yeah, the issue is that people are, are, once again, finding, uh, objections that we didn't anticipate.
So those would be only two, okay.
Real quick. Yeah, um, Longmont Sister Cities, I won't have that until Thursday, but reminder for those of us who are going. On the weekend of the third, um, be prepared and be ready for a great adventure. Don't forget, put it on your calendars.
All right, I'm, I'm great adventure right after that note.
So, um, yeah, I'm trying to remember back when NGLA, so, the NGLA, the, it was, um, we had LHA staff. Come and present, and they answered a lot of questions, they did a really good job.
Great.
You know, defining upcoming projects as well as, kind of, the ins and outs of what, um, what they're doing, so. Yeah, they've seen, the consensus was that people were, were on board, they're approving, so, you know, it wasn't any kind of. Unanticipated backlash for any projects or apartments or developments that LHA is doing, so, um, I mean, that was, that was a positive. Uh, the, um, youth council, they were just wrapping up their, um, their business and planning for the summer. I believe over the summer, they're gonna have, well, they're gonna have their trip to the villages. Um, and, um, they're, they're going to continue working over the summer as well, I think in the past they had. Cut off for the summer, and a lot of the kiddos are eager and wanting to, to work through the summer, so. That's something that we can kind of tap into if, you know, volunteer opportunities, um, you know, that. That seems like something they were, they were interested in, just participating and being a part of, uh, the community, so, and voluntary work. Um, in the museum, and we have another meeting coming up on Wednesday, so this was, I had to pull, that's what I was trying to pull up through the last one. Um, yeah, they're just going over the director's report, um, looking at exhibits, um, one of the things that they did talk to. Now I'm remembering, um, the expansion, um, and how it was in different phases, so, for me, that, I found that very interesting. Um, you know, so they have the phase one, which is fully funded, includes renovating, uh, the former textile storage area. And converting it into offices, that should be done by the end of October. Phase one B, configuring the courtyard, leveling out the areas of used for more rentals, um. Removing the pavilion and constructing a band shell stage on the far side of the courtyard, uh, which will improve concerts. In phase two, adding approximately six thousand square feet of gallery space, another seven thousand feet of support space. Construction begins next year as funding allows, and then phase three, adding classrooms, new gift shop, cafe, hands-on children's gallery and. New core history exhibits, replacing the front range riser, so they, it sounded like they're trying to. Uh, create a more interactive space, and moving out some of the old, bringing in some of the new. Um, and the board had decided to put together a resolution, I don't think we received it. It's coming down their hindsight, and it was really just to support, um, asking city council to support, um. Museum expansion and their capital improvement. museum expansion in their capital improvement, um, or their capital campaign.
That's basically what you brought up, Ken, wasn't it?
Well, I think this is a little different. My, my concern, I think, is, is when they're successful, whenever that is, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be a lot to raise the money. That, that I think we ought to be on record, for whoever sits on council at that time. Um, that, that council ought to do whatever's necessary to balance the customer, something else, dedicated sales tax, or an approach like that, to fund whatever their operating costs are. They're going to pony up and, and cover those capital costs. Whoever sits on council at that time.
To put a measure on the future balance, to fund the Longmont's operations, whatever, so, um, yeah, and that was it. And then the library, um, the library, let me see if I can. Um, that one, they did talk about, you know, how the friends of the Longmont Library contribute to a lot of programming and things that, that should be essential.
Right.
So really, we're depending on a group that really should be the extras, like providing the extra, um, you know, like a showcase or bringing out an author, or something outside of their normal scope. And what the board had been discussing is really what they're finding is that they're too heavily dependent on the friends of the library to fund things that should just be part of their, um, normal budget.
So we saw, look at that through the budget process.
Yes, and um, John did a really good job at laying out, and I can't.
Are they giving us any kind of financial analysis as to what they need?
Yeah, I, when I saw a brief snippet of what um John was putting together, and it, it looks more itemized and thorough than what we had seen in the past, prior to his, um, stepping into this role. So I think, you know, there's going to be a sense of clarity and, and of what, what they're really wanting and needing to, um.
Suzie, are those numbers tied to the preferred level of funding?
I, I think that's, that it's geared towards that. There are some things that, you know, were like the must haves, and then there's more of like the nice, nice to have, you know, and, you know, it's all like different gradients of, of what, what the priorities are, but it is looking through that lens.
Can I ask one follow-up, or you're at to this, because I know we're going to, we're not going to talk too over. Marcia mentioned earlier the water board conversation about chimney offices. And I heard, I heard also, um, your conversation, but now that the, the anticipated costs are. And we have had, we've had zero conversation about this, the council. At least I haven't, I don't know if anybody else has.
Only when they presented and gave us an update. Yeah, that was a, uh, this is since then.
Yeah.
And um, what, they have not divided it out to the stakeholders.
Oh, here's, here's what I wanted to just be reminded. It's my recollection, the bond election, the bond proposal was for forty-six million. We were going to augment that with fees to sixty million. That sixty million could have gone up or down based on how many acre feet. It fell back to seventy, sixty-five hundred square feet, as I recall. At sixty million, we're now estimated at seventy million for sixty-five hundred.
Well, I think it was seven, seven thousand.
This is just, so they haven't even come to me yet, this is just percolating, it's way up.
I was just getting them.
We were at seventy, but I think, I think the number, when we ended up, what we could actually, how much we actually prefer, or, or the participation level, I think that got scaled back to sixty-five hundred, but that's why I'm asking. It would be really helpful to me to get that updated. That's, that's huge, that if, if to participate at the sixty-five hundred to go from level, we're now talking about an additional ten million dollars.
I know, and that's why, I keep talking about this all day, even though.
Yeah, I'm trying, I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but when we bring them back, we'll kind of, here's what we were, here's what we did, here's what the cost is. And I think, so the interesting piece for me on this is they're still talking whole numbers, they're not talking, you know, participant numbers, and, and so understanding is, you know, is for value, and I think there's still more work, I think it's more, this may be coming, and is that.
Is waste of managed costs?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my feedback is, where are you doing to manage your costs?
We have the cases.
Yeah.
So I just have, I'm just going to do two things, because you're going to do on homelessness, but first of all, um, they're, uh, we need to have a, a renewable, renewal authority for the Sherman on Stein, and uh, the mayor appoints one, one of those board members. So, uh, Harold and I were talking.
You make the recommendation, and then our council has to vote on it.
Okay, all right, okay. So Harold and I talked about who we thought would be, uh, good, and we decided Chris Mobile Ray would be a good person and/or, or John Creighton. So I had coffee with Chris on Saturday, he's very interested. Um, but he, as you know, has been appointed dean, so his plate is a little fuller. He wants some, some answers that we'll talk about tomorrow, and then if he turns down, he kind of really wants to do it tomorrow. Um, then we'll ask John Creighton.
What about somebody, if John, is, is he good about somebody in that office there, like Bill Smellinger or someone like that?
Chris grows to the top really because he is on the LDVA board, and um, you know, they're, they're going to work together when he's taking that knowledge, which. The other thing I want to get you a real fast update, because we're going to talk about homelessness, about the housing meeting that we had, uh, last Thursday. Uh, it was really a good turnout, Suzie was there and Marcia came in, um, as well, thank you for attending that. At the beginning, Alberto Nidosi gave a, a really good, uh, update on what we are doing, what is the overall plan through the county, through all of the services that are available, and I had Don send you a list of, you know, late, like four thirty. And uh, as to what we are offering here, just so that you have an update. Harold gave a great presentation like he always does on, on two changes, Xenia for the lower, uh, AMI. Uh, through the Longmont House in the 40. Um, the feedback from the churches that attended was that they had no idea as to what we were doing in the city, and they were incredibly impressed. Because they just assumed we'd be doing nothing, as they see. So, um. Uh, there's interest in donations, the payback is, they're interested in giving donations, emergency shelters, safe lots. Uh, and a couple of churches even said they would be interested in, in having temporary permanent housing for some homeless people. Um, we need to talk about, uh, donations, how are they going to donate, where are they going to donate? And Hope is a huge part of this as far as operating, and my point of bringing this all forward is now is that we have, um, we have to answer to our commercial and residents, that they have been, um, they have been asking for a long time, what are we doing about it, where, where are we going to do it? If we get the beds, then we give ZAC the ability to enforce our camping ban. And move people along or give them a bed, find some place to live, so.
So we can already do that in the summer, because the beds that we have are never full.
Well.
We can do it up until they're full, so. And I think that's what we don't know is, you know, start enforcement, does it fill up and then get to a point where you can? And I think that's where the emergency shelter starts, gets into that.
Except that, uh, I don't know how you, how you deal with the process, but you can move them along if there's a bed. They don't have to go to bed, they just have to move along.
But we can say, based upon where our camping limit is, you can't stay here.
Correct. If they choose not to go and there's space, then that's a different issue. If it fills up, then we can no longer do it, and that's where the additional capacity.
That's why they're passing the communication.
And then when Zach is working with Hope now, in terms of getting that information, as, as the officers run the streets, they had that meeting last week.
So that, that was it. Um, we're, we're late. I was going to update you, some of you can do that later, and um.
Some of it was good.
That was like, you were there for a staff vacation every second. It was really good, the kids were, were amazing. Um, the ideas were, were really, really good. Some of them were quite sad, because they, they had pretend money that they could, that was big, like a jet that they could write it to with comments, what, what they wanted, and some of them said, can you bring my family a house? Can you buy us some, some big shoes? Can you, I mean, just basic. And one kid said, there are a lot of, a lot of homeless teenagers, can we have another shelter for you? You know, you really find, number one, they're very caring. None of them ask for football or baseball equipment, I was shocked, and I thought that would be huge, um, but.
They did basketball court.
Yes, things like that, yeah. They wanted a place as well to, um, to hang out, that was, that was, they don't have a place to go. So, um, the process for that is going to be, uh, they're compiling all of the likes, they're compiling all of the ideas. And then the ideas are going to go to the youth council to go over, and then they will prioritize them. Um, and I asked them, once they're prioritized, can we bring these kids back and tell them the priority list and ask them? Because they were saying to us, we always get involved and get excited, but we never know what happens. So I said, you know, we love these kids too, and then at the end they'll bring them to, uh, city council to give direction on it. And it's going to be based on the funding as well, who wants what, how many, how many, how many dollars do we have, what is it going to be? And my, one of my suggestions is going to be that we take a portion of it and invest in the operating costs, if, if we have anything left, but I don't. So that's it, really fast.